En observancia de la Día Nacional de Igualdad de las Mujeres, la Asociación Negra de Negros presentó el Saludo a las Mujeres Negras Summit Virtual de Empoderamiento. Las participantes incluían al vicepresidente de 2020, senador Kamala Harris, la congresista Maxine Waters, senador Holly J. Mitchell y la patrulla de CBS 2, Pat Harvey. La Asociación Negra de Negros ha sido instrumental en la incubación y desarrollo de más de 15,000 negocios afroestadounidenses durante los últimos 40 años. Más información sobre este evento virtual se puede encontrar en bbal.org.
El 2020 es el Censo este año. ¿Has estado contado? No puedo enfatizar cuán importante es esto. El tiempo está acabando y no hay buena razón para no contar. Y es fácil. Puedes hacerlo online o ir a uno de los muchos eventos "hagámoslo contado" que suceden por todo el área. El miembro del Consejo, Karen Price, estaba en manos para animar al sur de LA a ser valientes y contar.
Estamos ahora aquí en Avalon, donde estamos promoviendo la participación en el Censo. Nos asociamos con el Distrito del Consejo y estamos muy emocionados de hacer que nuestros vecinos contaran para el 2020.
Bueno, estamos contentos de estar aquí para animar a los vecinos y amigos a ser contados. Sabemos cuán importante es el Censo. Realmente dicta y determina los tipos de programas federales que podemos beneficiarnos en nuestra comunidad.
También estamos haciendo pruebas de COVID aquí hoy. Así que cuando recibimos a todos contados, podemos obtener financiación para cosas como respuesta de emergencia, cosas como los servicios gratuitos que ofrecemos hoy.
Es importante para que así uno también se haga contar, para tener más acceso a las escuelas, parques, unidades de hospitales.
Si queremos cosas que necesitamos, como ayuda de alquiler, cosas que nos ayuden en cuanto a los niños, o como un día camp, y cosas de ese tipo, el Censo ayuda porque saben cuántas personas hay en la comunidad.
Participar en el censo es absolutamente privado y seguro. Entonces, su información nunca va a ser compartida con ninguna otra agencia, incluso la oficina de inmigración. El censo nunca le va a pedir por su estatus migratorio o ciudadanía. Entonces, es absolutamente privado la información que usted le va a proveer al censo. Y queremos que nuestras familias respondan y cuenten a todos que están viviendo en su hogar.
Llenen el censo, es muy importante para nuestra comunidad, para nuestros hijos, para nosotros mismos. Porque si no llenamos el censo, vamos a tener muy poca ayuda. Si llenamos el censo, vamos a tener mucho beneficio para la comunidad. Llenen el censo, vengan, no tengan miedo, no pasa nada.
Está tarde en el verano y la necesidad de comida yropa y equipo de regreso no ha reducido un poco. Afortunadamente, los programas de "grab and go" pueden mantenerse al margen de la demanda. La señora Monica Rodriguez trajo suministros y recursos a las familias en el Distrito del Consejo 7. Mientras tanto, en El Sarino, Team Sadio hoste una otra donación de comida. Miren.
Hoy hemos reunido una feria de recursos para las familias que viven en motels aquí en la comunidad de Silmar, pero en toda mi distrito, en un esfuerzo para asegurarnos de que nuestros hijos estén conectados a los recursos vitales que necesitan para tener un buen inicio en su año académico.
Es muy importante porque necesitamos los suministros escolares para los niños. Hemos estado, ya sabes, en cierres. Y es muy importante obtener tantos suministros y sería muy útil. Y estamos muy agradecidos por ello.
La educación es importante. Y, ya sabes, estoy aquí solo para recoger algunas bolsas y, ya sabes, obtener información de mis hermanos, ya sabes, tratar de empezar el año escolar seguro.
Sabemos que la pandemia ha causado un gran número de desafíos adicionales para los niños en particular. Y así, para aquellos que experimentan la desaparición de la ciudad, viven en instalaciones interiores como el In here in Silmar, necesitamos asegurarnos de que estamos conectando todas estas familias a LA Unified, a los servicios gratuitos que están disponibles a través de nuestro sistema de biblioteca pública de LA. Así que tenemos recursos de trabajo que también están aquí. Muchas de las ayudas de apoyo para ayudar a las familias a conectarse a los recursos que necesitan, desde la casa de familia de LA hasta los servicios de cuidado de la valle norte, LA Unified, pero esas oportunidades de trabajo críticas que tal vez muchas familias necesitan. Lo tenemos todo aquí.
Ahorita que no tengo empleo, también voy sobre lo del empleo. Y pues para la ubicación, porque sí es importante buscar ubicación estable para los hijos.
Es otra forma de asegurarnos de que, a pesar de una pandemia, nuestros hijos no se van a dejar atrás. Sabemos que los niños que viven en comunidades de color en particular y aquellos en áreas socioeconómicas inferiores no tienen acceso igual a el mismo tipo de tecnología que muchos otros tienen. Y así, estamos tratando de asegurarnos de que tengan acceso a esas mismas comodidades para que no se les deje atrás. Hoy es una gran distribución de comida para El Sarino y la comunidad entorno. Estamos contentas de colaborar con todos los involucrados, todos nuestros voluntarios. Y está siendo hoste en la iglesia presidencial de Los Ángeles aquí en El Sarino.
Pues nos ayuda mucho porque pues ahora económicamente no nos está trabajando. Y aunque sea para una semana, tenemos para llegar con los alimentos en la casa para nuestros hijos.
Esto es bueno para el gobierno, darle un poco de comida a nuestras familias. Appreciamos todo lo que hacen por nosotros.
Para esta distribución, tenemos suficiente comida para 2,000 familias aquí hoy que esperamos que vayan a través de esta distribución de almacén. Tenemos productos frescos, alimentos, carnes, y luego productos de mesa. Alrededor de 80 libras de comida, el equivalente a casi 70 comidas para las familias que vienen hoy.
El representante de este área para realmente poner la conciencia de la necesidad de la comunidad. Ahora mismo, a nivel federal, estamos luchando por el próximo paquete de alivio para obtener más dinero en las ciudades, los condios y los estados para que puedan cuidar de sus personas.
Esto nos ayuda especialmente ahora en la situación de que, ya sabes, no podemos trabajar. Nos ayuda en toda la familia. Ya sabes, eventos como este, ya sabes, no solo ayuda a mi familia, sino que ayuda a toda la comunidad. Así que es muy importante para nosotros, en lo que respecta a tener este tipo de eventos.
Esta es una gran comunidad. Somos muy apoyadas entre las otras. El mundo de la Unión también. Somos todos aquí por el otro lado de este momento. Y vamos a permanecer aquí durante toda la pandemia, representando a los empleados de la ciudad y a los miembros de la comunidad.
Una regresión a la normalidad. Eso es lo que todos deseamos durante este momento de pandemia de COVID-19. Y mientras que principalmente hemos hecho la ajustación a una nueva normalidad, máscaras de cara y lavanderas frecuentes, recientemente obtuvimos un pequeño trozo de normalidad de vuelta, la reabertura del Zoo de LA.
Qué día soleado y hermoso. Eso nos ayuda a bienvener a todos de vuelta al Zoo de Los Ángeles. Estamos muy emocionados de finalmente abrir los puertos hoy para bienvenida a nuestros miembros y a nuestros invitados de vuelta al zoo. Se nos han cerrado durante un histórico 166 días debido a la pandemia de COVID-19. Pero eso no paró nuestro trabajo. Eso no paró lo que sabemos que es importante, y eso es comprometerse con el cuidado de los animales, continuar nuestros esfuerzos conservativos, mantener la instalación y el paisaje. Pero aquí estamos hoy, reabriendo en conformidad con los protocolos del Departamento de Salud Pública del Distrito de Los Ángeles, que modifican la experiencia para asegurar la salud y la seguridad de nuestros visitantes, de nuestro personal y los animales. Creemos que ofrecer un ambiente seguro de afuera donde la gente pueda conectar con la naturaleza y los animales que todos conocemos y amamos es algo que nos ayudará mientras todos vivimos en una nueva normalidad.
Nosotros llegábamos aquí antes de la cuarentena. Estábamos aquí probablemente cuatro veces a la semana al menos.
Sí, a veces cinco, en realidad. Así que todos los días de la semana.
Honestamente, confiaba en el zoo como una parte real e integral de nuestra educación. Así que estamos muy emocionados de que volvamos.
Angela es un bebé gorila de la selva occidental nacido este año. Y es la primera vez en 20 años que hemos tenido un bebé gorila en el zoo. Así que todo el mundo la ama.
Ella es mucho más móvil ahora. Está saliendo de la madre, jugando con algunas de las otras mujeres. Así que habrá algunos cambios muy divertidos de comportamiento que la gente verá con Angela.
Solo proporciona mucho más que solo venir a ver los animales. Y espero que la gente lo aprecie y pueda participar en eso.
Andrew.
Sí.
Genial. Y usted es aquí por la doble presentación.
Yo sí.
Bien. Los almacenes se abrieron hace un mes y medio. Nos asociamos con Electric Dusk Drive-In. Tuvieron todo el equipo y experiencia. Hicimos programación, así que nos asociamos para poner lo que llamamos "Cinema de parking". Así que es 88.3 FM. Cada vez que salgas del carro, máscaras, 60 departes.
Creo que simplemente hicimos un buscador de Google sobre almacenes en el área y este apareció.
Estábamos buscando algo para hacer fuera de la casa porque, ya sabes, ha estado en cuarentena siempre.
Me encanta ir a ver películas y esto parece ser la mejor manera de hacerlo ahora.
Da una oportunidad para nosotros ir a las películas sin tener que estar dentro de una película y todavía estamos todos seguros.
Es mi primera vez. ¿Ha oído hablar de almacenes?
No, nunca.
Sí, así que nunca fuimos a almacenes.
Esta es mi primera vez. Estoy emocionada de ver cómo se siente y experimentar el respeto.
Estamos sonriendo. Creo que estamos listos.
Cada vez que alguien dice que algo está muerto o que nunca viene de vuelta, o que es el fin de todo, creo que voy a tomar eso con un grano de sal porque no se puede predecir el futuro.
Cada buen cinefólo sabe dónde está el "will", está el "drive-in". Te mantendremos informado cuando más de estos eventos de películas de afuera surjan por todo el área. La Grand Annex invita a usted a una open mic virtual el jueves. La Pavillón de la Búrtola tiene una abertura previa y el Festival de Film de Ola México está en línea a un precio super bajo. Todo esto sigue en Virtual Things to Do.
Unirte a la Grand Annex para su live de streaming anual de open mic en Zoom. Este evento de open mic familiar es dirigido hacia músicos y poetas, así que los comediistas tendrán que esperar. Cada performador tendrá la oportunidad de interpretar hasta cinco minutos. Para participar, por favor, inscreve-se antes del día del evento. Este es un evento gratuito, así que no se pierdan sus 15 minutos virtuales de fama con la open mic de la Grand Annex el jueves, 3 de septiembre, a partir de 7:00 p.m. Para más información, visite grandvision.org/grand-anx. El Museo de Historia Natural está emocionado de bienvenida a la comunidad de LA al Pavilón de la Búrtola de la Búrtola y a los jardines de la naturaleza como primera fase de su reabertura después de meses de cierre de COVID-19. Están ofreciendo una primera vista y horas especiales a los miembros del museo y invitados de los socios de la comunidad a partir de 28 de agosto y para el público en general el 11 de septiembre. Los boletos de anticipación son necesarios y son limitados. Así que no esperen. Unirse a un viaje que inspira la curiosidad, la descubrimiento y la responsabilidad para nuestro mundo natural y cultural justo aquí en LA y más allá. Para obtener información sobre la reabertura de la Pavillón de la Búrtola y los jardines de la naturaleza en el Museo de Historia Natural, visite nhm.org/butterflies. Estamos de vuelta este 2020 con el 12° Festival de Film de Ola México y una increíble lista de películas. Aún más sorprendente es el hecho de que se puede atrapar este año el festival de anywhere en Estados Unidos y por un precio increíblemente ridículamente bajo de $4.99. Sí, ese es el programa completo de Ola México por $4.99. Cada película será introducida por el personal y cineastas del festival, seguido de una pregunta y respuesta para cada película. Hay 20 películas competidoras a las que se puede votar como todos los años. Y algunas películas estarán disponibles en todo el festival. Algunas vendrán solo durante 24 horas, así que vigile el horario del festival. No se pierdan el 12° Festival de Film de Ola México. Para obtener información, visite olamexicoff.com. Y eso es un mirar a algunas cosas virtuales que hacer.
Eso es todo para esta edición. Soy Rosha Goel. De todos nosotros aquí en LA This Week, gracias por acompañarnos. Y un recordatorio, ustedes pueden vernos en línea en la ciudadanía de LA.org. Nosotros estamos en Facebook, Twitter y YouTube, así que no se pierdan. Nos vemos la próxima vez por más LA This Week.
Darle a su hijo un buen inicio empieza en el momento de su nacimiento.
Habla con ellos. Lee con ellos.
Canta y cuenta con ellos.
Hablar, leer, cantar y contar con su hijo son formas simples de relacionarse con ellos. Ayuden a fortalecer sus mentes y cuerpos y protejan su salud. Su voz, sus abrazos, su amor. Construyan resiliencia y protejan contra los efectos perjudiciales de la estrés. Así que soy el médico de la California General. Esta es mi prescripción.
Habla, lee, canta.
Joe Farrell, how are you doing? I see some nice developments coming up.
A lot going on and these projects, you know, are probably going to get us through the reception.
Okay, good morning, members. Good morning, members of our public. Today is September 1st. This is the Los Angeles City Council. I'm Nuri Martinez, the President of the City Council. We're experiencing technical difficulties. So, right before we start public comment, our city attorney will explain what some of those are. So, we just ask for your patience. Madam Clerk, go ahead and call the roll.
Blumenfield.
Blumenfield, present.
Bonin.
Bonin, present.
Buscaino.
Present.
Sidio.
Present.
Harris Dawson.
Here.
Coetz.
Present.
Krikorian. Lee.
Here, present.
Oh, Councilmember Krikorian is present, as well as Councilmember Lee Martinez.
Present.
O'Farrell.
Present.
Price.
Here.
Rodriguez. Rue.
Present.
Weston.
Here.
Thirteen members present in accord, Madam President.
First order of business?
Approval of the minutes of August 26, 2020?
Mr. Lee moves and Mr. Bonin seconds next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Coetz moves and Mr. Price seconds next.
Madam President, today is Tuesday and it's time for the flag salute.
Mr. Krikorian, can you please lead us in our pledge of allegiance, sir?
It'd be my pleasure, Madam President. If you could all rise, face our flag, mindful of the principles that it represents, join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Madam Clerk, let's go ahead and run through the agenda.
Madam President, would counsel like all items to go forth with today?
Without objection, that will be the order. Next.
Items 1 through 10 are items noticed for public hearing. Items 11 through 21 are items which public hearings have been held. Items 22 through 50 are items for which public hearings have not been held. For the record, item 35 should be received and filed in as much as the bill is no longer active. And also, there is a request to hold item 42 on the desk. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Here without objections, the items are now before us. Members, if you wish to call any of these items special or introduce an amending motion. Mr. O'Farrell?
Thank you, Madam President. I want to call items 14 and 42 special for remarks.
Items 14 and 22 special for Mr. O'Farrell.
Yes, 14 and 42. Thank you.
I'm sorry, 42, thank you. Mr. Blumenfield?
Yes, thank you. I have an amendment for my item number 43.
Okay, you want to go ahead and read the moving clause?
Sure. It says, "I therefore move that the council instruct the Department of Building and Safety is a substitute amendment in consultation with the city attorney to prepare a report related to advertising businesses' operational changes due to COVID-19 that includes the following: One, recommendations on which codes present life-safety concerns and should continue to be enforced during the COVID state of emergency; Two, a plan for prioritizing enforcement activities during the COVID-19 state of emergency that takes into account those codes that present life-safety concerns; Three, a recommendation regarding enforcement of the requirements for businesses to obtain a permit for temporary signs that are tack-pasted or otherwise temporarily affixed to windows and/or on the walls of buildings, barns, sheds, or fences as defined by Municipal Code Section 14.4.16, and whether the department should allow temporary signs until the end of COVID-19 state of emergency with notifications to property owners as to sunset date; and finally, four, the status of the 14 Order to Comply citations for temporary sign violations issued from March 4, 2020 through July 24, 2020." Second.
Second, by Mr. Krikorian. Mr. Blumenfield, can you please email that to the clerk so we can circulate it as soon as possible?
Yes, right away.
Any others? Mr. Coetz?
Yes, I just wanted to be sure that I pulled 43 for comments as well.
Any others, Mr. Coetz?
No, that's it.
Okay, members, give me a minute. We're preparing items which we can go ahead and vote on before we start public comment. Okay, Madam Clerk, let's go ahead and prepare to vote on items 11 through 13 and 15 through 21. Go ahead and call the roll.
Blumenfield.
Blumenfield, aye.
Bonin.
Bonin, aye.
Buscaino.
Aye.
Sidio.
Sidio, aye.
Harris Dawson.
Yes.
Coetz.
Aye.
Krikorian.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
O'Farrell. Price.
Aye.
Rodriguez.
Aye.
Rue.
Aye.
Aye.
O'Farrell, aye.
Thank you, Councilmember O'Farrell. 14 ayes, these items are adopted.
Okay, Madam Clerk, let's go ahead and move to our public comment. Go ahead and read out the caller information for those who want to provide public comment today.
As indicated on the agenda, members of the public wishing to offer public comment should call 669-254-5252 and use meeting ID number 1605358466 and then press pound. Then press pound again when prompted for participant ID. Once submitted into the meeting, press *9 to request to speak. Let me repeat, call 669-254-5252 and use meeting ID number 1605358466 and then press pound. Then press pound again when prompted for participant ID. Once that minute into the meeting, press *9 to request to speak.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Mr. City Attorney, why don't you go ahead and explain our speaking rules to members of the public and also explain the technical difficulties we're having with public comment this morning?
Yes, absolutely. Thank you. So, to members of the public calling in, when it's your turn to speak, please state which of the agenda items you'd like to speak on. You have one minute to speak, up to three minutes total, and if you wish, one minute for general public comment. Please speak on the items before your general public comment. We'll tell you when your time's up. When speaking on the agenda items, you must be on topic. Our goal is to get through as many speakers as we can. If you're not speaking on topic or if we can't tell whether you're speaking on an agenda item, you'll get one brief warning from me or the president. If you do not immediately get clearly on topic or again stray off-topic, the president will cut you off and will forfeit the rest of your speaking time and will move on to the next speaker. We're going to take 40 minutes total of public comment. As for the technical issues, Zoom has reconfigured some of its settings and it used to be that we admitted all members of the public as a group from the Zoom waiting room into the Zoom meeting. We can't do that now and keep everybody muted. So, we're going to be admitting members of the public one at a time. When you're admitted to the meeting and you'll hear music until you're admitted into the meeting. When you're admitted, you will be unmuted and you will be the person speaking to the council. So, you'll be asked which items you want to speak on. You'll be told how many minutes you have. So, please be attentive and we apologize that you'll be hearing music on the phone or the computer, whatever you're using to communicate with us until you're actually in the meeting. And again, as I always say, if you're also listening to the meeting on Channel 35 or another device, as soon as you're admitted into the meeting, please turn down the volume on those devices immediately because there's a time delay between the meeting and the live broadcast and it causes a lot of confusion if you continue to listen on the other devices. Again, our apologies for the technical glitch. We hope it goes well. Thank you, Madam President.
Yeah, but the technical glitch is not our fault.
It's not our fault. Zoom has reconfigured things and we're doing the best we can to deal with it.
Very well. Let's go ahead and take the first speaker.
Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on. Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on. Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
All items!
Hi, Speaker, are you there? If you are, please turn down your volume on your other devices and tell us which items you'd like to speak on.
I'd like to speak on all items.
Because you have three minutes to speak on all items. Go ahead.
And general public comment.
And you're one minute for general public comment. Go ahead.
Mommy Nuri, have you heard about the liens? They're not very friendly liens. They really are unconstitutional. It's bad enough that rent moratoriums are not effective because Governor Gavin Newsom needs to keep amending them. The way we should amend the right to use 42 U.S.C. 1983 in our First Amendment and our Fourteenth Amendment and our Second Amendment and our Fifth Amendment and our Fourth Amendment. But, again, regarding the liens, it's time that America get your lazy fucking asses out of your beds and go to work. This way, no one gets a lien, no one has to contest the city of Los Angeles regarding its discrimination policy and pattern and practice of corruption to force people into the streets and make more homeless population out of what's happening in the state of California, you jackass Gavin Newsom. And mommy, you know what lien stands for? Yeah, that's what I'm talking about. That's what it stands for. So, why are you so upset when it comes to people who can't be told how to put their belongings or put their vehicles or remove graffiti from their properties? Why is that? It's not trash. It's just there's not enough room to store it the same way the city of Los Angeles doesn't store and help homeless people store their...
Speaker, we seem to have veered off. On topic. Please get back on topic, Speaker.
What were you going to say? What were you going to say? Put me under the Brown Act 54950 to 54963?
Please get on topic, Speaker.
Who the hell is that? Mommy!
Okay, he's not on topic. We'll just move on to the next caller.
Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on. Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on. Speaker, please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Mr. Boar.
Speaker, which items do you want to speak on?
I'm going to speak on general public comment number one.
Okay, go ahead. You have a minute.
I understand that, jackass. You know what's wrong with jackasses in the whole city of Los Angeles? They like to persecute criminals like Jose Wezar, an Englander. Now, my current price is under a federal indictment and he plans to hush-hush and report all the criminal activity regarding Plum. We're going to notice an extreme nervousness why the city attorney's office has helped Jose Wezar still censor and monitor our public comment assholes. So, as long as the city attorney continues to violate the color of authority by becoming a criminal himself in a process in which people do not comprehend, but I'm going to tell you...
Thank you, Speaker.
Madam Clerk, before we move on to the next speaker, can you please continue item number 10 to October 13th?
Madam President?
Yes, Mr. Krikorian?
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted a clarification because that clearly was Armando Herman calling not once but twice and it's really not fair to other speakers if a caller gets double time by calling in on two different devices in order to be heard twice in a row. So, perhaps the city attorney could provide us with some help in ensuring that people don't get double time simply by gaming the call-in system and deprive other people of their opportunity to speak.
Indeed, we don't want that to happen. It was my mistake. I thought it was a different frequent speaker. It became clear only partway through.
Okay, Madam Clerk, can you please continue item number 10 to October 13th?
Yes, Madam President.
Thank you. Let's go ahead and take the next speaker.
Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on. Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on. Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Hi, yes. Is this for me?
Yes, you're on the... Hello, you can...
Got it.
What items do you want to speak on?
Yes, so this is Richie Sodjanko from Sunrise Movement L.A. and People's City Council. I would like to speak on 3942 and general public comment, please.
You have two minutes for your items and one minute for general public comment. Go ahead.
Yeah, 39 is a... Item 39 is a report back for the economic... Yeah, thirty-nine is a, item thirty-nine is a report back for the economic impact on COVID that it's had on the city. Obviously, the whole city has been impacted, over half the city has lost their jobs due to COVID-nineteen. That obviously has an economic impact on everyone here, including the city government. The easiest thing to do would be to implement what we've been calling for for the past five months, is to defund the police. There's no reason for three billion dollars to go to LAPD. Just last night, although it was from the sheriff, another black man was shot and killed in Los Angeles. It's funny that some council members sit on panels and they dare to utter the names of Jacob Blake, but they don't say the names of Anthony McLean, or the young man that was, or the young man that was shot last night. And so, we're calling to defund the police, we've been calling to defund the police. The economic impact of COVID is obviously, has shown itself in many ways, considering that, you know, many people in the city cannot pay rent. And that goes into my next point about the eviction defense program, item forty-two. I mean, it's September first, and you guys are still discussing eviction defense and what it looks like. And Gavin Newsom didn't bail you out yesterday, because there are still some evictions that are not covered under the, what was passed by the state legislator. And so people can still be evicted, and people, just like people can still be evicted, and there are unhoused people being swept off the streets, and you all can deny it all you want. You are participating in this. People are gonna be evicted, and people are still being swept off the street, and what are you all doing about it?
Sir, you want to go ahead and move on to your general public comment? Go ahead.
General public comment, to you, Nury Martinez, we kept it pretty light on you recently, but during the town hall last Thursday, you said that you're really disappointed that you don't hear from people in your community and your constituents. Nury, I hope you're paying attention and not looking down at your papers. You say that you want, you know, other people fill up the time during public comment periods during city council meetings? Well, Nury, you do thirty minutes of public comment each day. You have two city council meetings. That's an hour a week. If you want to hear from more of your constituents, why don't you extend public comment period? Doesn't that make sense? But you gaslight people on the town hall, but it's like, we all see what's going on. Like, all of us can see it, Nury. We were all laughing, like, you're a joke. If you want to hear from more, more people, why don't you do some outreach, and then tell them to call in, and give them more than an hour a week? You think an hour a week is enough to hear from your constituents? Because that's what you're giving them, but then you go on to town hall and say, oh, well-
Thank you so much, sir. Next caller.
Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on. Caller, please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on. Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Hi, this is Rob Kwan. I'd like to speak on items forty-two, thirty-nine, and general public comment.
You have two minutes for your items and one minute for general public comment. Go ahead, Rob.
Thank you. For item forty-two, this relates to the eviction defense fund, and, again, like, we're, rent's due. I don't know why this is something that's only coming up for a vote now, and, yeah, that's for a quick report back in a week, but like, how are you gonna have this thing together and operational? You know, you could have just funded a tenants' right to counsel at any point over the last few years, and we'd have a robust program that we could ramp up and actually handle the problem. And instead, you've waited till the last minute to scrap something together, really just kind of consistent with city council's pattern of doing enough to get the headlines, getting none of the details right, and it all taking a year or two too long. And even after you get it done, there's all kinds of problems you need to fix up afterwards. Item thirty-nine relates to COVID spending, and it's essentially doubled from about half a billion to one-point-two billion, and, you know, that's not on you necessarily. You know, this is a pandemic. But you did have a bungled reopening that has prolonged the COVID pandemic. So that much is self-imposed. And that cost is only through the end of the year, does not include the rest of twenty-twenty-one that falls under this budget. Hundreds of millions of dollars in spending is not covered by the state feds or county. And not only are we looking at new spending on this front, with more to come in twenty-twenty-one, but now because your failed reopening, we've got hundreds of millions in revenue shortfalls that we have to deal with as well. There's really no choice here. You need to open up those contracts with LAPD. I think, just looking at, like, the contrast, turning to my general public comment, you know, I thought it was funny to see that the LAPD has a PR budget of about three million-ish, three and a half million or so. That's about the budget of the Ethics Commission. So you spend more on PR for law enforcement than you do policing yourselves. Maybe that's why we got the FBI running up and down these halls. Maybe that's why we had Maury Golden rolling around for two years or so, being a nice little bug out there. I think it's absolutely insulting that that fiscal emergency was dropped in a Friday evening news dump. You don't even have the courage to put this out there and actually discuss it. We need to open up those LAPD contracts. We need to open up those LAPD contracts. We need to defund the police. None of this shit is working. Joe Biden's not gonna bail you out. Like, I don't know why that's, that's your only hope and dream, is that Joe Biden's gonna save the day for you. This is just absolutely astounding to see the feckless Democratic Party at a state, local, and national level. That's all I got. Thank you.
Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on. Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on. Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Hey, my name is Joshua Cantong, and I'd like to speak on item forty-two.
You have a minute. Go ahead.
Yeah, so, I'm a student at USC affiliated with Strategic Actions for a Just Economy, a tenants' rights and equitable development organization in South LA. Sage and myself strongly support item forty-two, the motion to expand the eviction defense program. So I think it's important to acknowledge our current historical moment, one in which nearly five-hundred thousand households in LA County are at risk of being evicted following the sunsetting of the Digital Council Emergency Rule One, which happens to be today. In light of this, we should galvanize forward to implement a fully codified right to counsel, as well as linking the city program with the county stay-house LA program, so we can work better at preventing evictions together. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, caller. Next speaker.
Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on. Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on. Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on. Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on. Caller, please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on. Caller with the phone number ending in nine, four, one, two, you are on. Please state your name and what you would like to speak on.
Hi, good morning. Apologies. Armando Flores with the Valley Initiative and Commerce Association, VICA, speaking on item forty-three.
Go ahead. You have one minute.
Thank you. So we're speaking in support of item forty-three. As a business organization, we've seen several businesses do their best to continue operating during the pandemic, and part of this is keeping their customers informed of their operations, changes to their operations, and perhaps changes to their services. Waiving the requirement for businesses to obtain a permit while suspending citations will allow businesses to maintain this critical communication with their customers without fear of punishment or additional fees. So, we would urge the council to move forward, and we thank Councilmember Blumenfield for introducing this motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller.
Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on. Caller with the phone number ending in two, six, one, six, please state your name and what you would like to speak on.
Hello?
Hello, what items would you want to, what items do you want to speak on?
I'd like to speak on all items and a general public comment.
You have three minutes for your items and one minute for general public comment, Mr. Previn. Go ahead.
Okay, my name is Eric Previn, and I'm from Studio City, and, you know, I'm gonna speak on the agenda items now. While I was listening, there was silence for a very long time, and only if you have two devices could you actually hear me.
Why don't we talk about that in the general public comment after you're done with your agenda items, Mr. Previn?
We're still on the items, sir. We're on International Overdose Day is on the agenda, and I wanted to thank you, Fable, for bringing that to our attention. We have various items on the agenda. The power of putting items on the agenda is with the President. So thank you. We also have nine lighting districts that we won't be discussing, and we have a liquor license that I could discuss if I wanted to. It's a CD fourteen off-site consumption at a place called Sip and Snack over on East York in Wezor's district, so hashtag FBI investigation. You know, as regards to installation of speed humps over in Price's district, this is item forty-seven. Good work. You know, this is a guy who is facing a lot of scrutiny right now because he was directing giant payments to his reelection while giving away the more or less lighting district rights, not lighting district, sign rights, to developers that are, that have resulted in one of the largest big screen distractions for motorists in the history of the world. And Price is casually being looked at, as he has been for the last three years, while the FBI languishes in what has been a very exciting but attenuated investigation into the conduct of the city council and Fable, who are busy-
Mr. Previn, again, I think you're off-topic, so that's fine for general public comment. Let's stick to the agenda items now.
Item forty-four, I'm on forty-four, which I want to reflect is Wesson doing a great job with Price, again, not to double down, on the LA Conservation Corps, who are a group that are very helpful during elections because they help skew the meetings and the debate, and I'm sure that Holly Mitchell and, oh, this is from Herb Wesson, who's running against her, are gonna be going head-to-head, and there'll be some help from the Conservation Corps, which is Nikki Cantor's group in some way, and they get a lot of contracts. They're nakedly political. I know only because I'm a Democrat who tried to run against some of these Democrats, and they make it impossible. But, once again, thanks for reaching out to the Los Angeles Conservation Corps. Now, item forty-three, you've got Blumenfield, Corcoran, and Corret, so this is a very fishy item right up front, trying to suspend all citation enforcement for, until the end of the COVID emergency. So, what a surprise. These are usually the guys who are suggesting ideas for enforcement. Wasn't long that Corret's was idling, about his idling motion, and Blumenfield never likes to give up a, and incidentally, Office of Finance helps with some of these citations. I want to ask, what happened to Claire Bartel? Where is Claire Bartel, the Office of Finance Director, who, that's an office that had Nicole Burnson from CD twelve? Englander was busy lathering up the Office of Finance at all times.
Mr. Previn, move on to your general public comment.
Well, that's perfect timing, because I'm now gonna talk about that weird Office of Finance, and coming up, and hopefully people will look, on tomorrow's agenda, so it's totally fair in general public comment, you've got some major refunds for a group called Fab Fit Fund, who are getting almost a million dollars back, which is unbelievable. And then you've got Microsoft, who I think have made billions in the last four weeks, are getting a huge refund as well, and yet the residents of the city are begging for some relief. And I don't understand exactly what the city council is doing by curtailing the public meetings and by limiting the comment. This is a robust agenda full of a lot of different things, but all of the items that are of interest to the public are kind of sequestered off in a section marked, "We already heard from you and committed, you losers." And we're not losers, and we have a lot to say. And I just have to tell you that my respect for the city is not going up, okay? And I really think that you need to end the craziness of canceling Friday meetings and curtailing all these. It's ridiculous. There were no budget hearings, and the budget is so-
Thank you, Mr. Previn. Next speaker.
Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on. Caller with the phone number ending in five, one, three, eight, please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on. Caller with the phone number ending in five, one, three, eight, please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Hi, my name is Devin Manny, and general public comment.
Sure, you have a minute. Please go ahead.
As a resident of Council Vampire O'Farrell's district, and someone watches Angelinos who aren't paid six figures work overtime in order to save their fellow citizens and their city, I'm just wondering what has happened to force all of you into real action rather than the platitudes you're all so fond of? There is death and sadness and terror in the air in this city, and you have been given hundreds of opportunities to save the city from distress. And time and time again, you refuse to do anything besides passing the buck onto your constituents. They are all doing their jobs for you, and you should all be ashamed at letting it get to this point. The fact that any of you, any of you, can sleep right now amidst this is a complete fucking disgrace. You are the most impotent group of electeds in this country, and shame on you all. Cancel rent, fee hotels, defund the LAPD, and then, please, take a popsicle stick, take some twine, wrap it around your otherwise limp and flaccid actions, and go fuck yourselves. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go ahead and take the next speaker.
Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on. Caller with the phone number ending in three, two, three, four, please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Any of you can sleep right now amidst this is a complete fucking disgrace. You are the most impotent group of electeds in this country, and shame on you all.
So, that's the same person as last time.
Full rent, fee hotels, defund the LAPD, and then, please-
It's a recording.
Yeah, that was a recording.
Let's go ahead and take the next caller.
Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on. Caller with the phone number ending in one, zero, four, seven, please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on. Caller, please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on. Caller with the phone number ending in eight, nine, five, five, please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Hannah Kamal, I'd like to speak on item forty-two.
Go ahead. You have one minute.
Good morning. I'm an attorney with Bathetics Preventing and Ending Homelessness Project, and I'm speaking today on behalf of the Renters' Right to Counsel Coalition, which consists of community-based organizations, legal services providers, and siding-scale fee-for-service legal providers in LA County. We are united in seeking the right to counsel and in providing comprehensive eviction prevention and defense services in our region as a means to stop displacement of families, the destabilization of our community, and rising homelessness. We strongly support item forty-two, which would allocate nearly ten million dollars for an emergency eviction defense program. We also encourage the council to follow the recommendations outlined in H-CID's November twenty-nineteen report back regarding the eviction defense program. The program should include a public education campaign, eviction prevention services to resolve- eviction prevention services to resolve landlord tenant issues before court intervention is needed, short-term rental assistance for tenants, and free legal representation for low-income tenants and unlawful detainees. Low-income tenants, meaning those whose household income is at or below.
Thank you, Speaker.
Caller, please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on. Caller with the phone number ending in 1108, please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
...to stop displacement of families, the destabilization of our community, and rising homelessness.
Hello?
Speaker.
Hello.
Speaker, can you turn off your device because we're getting feedback? What items do you want to speak on?
Is this me?
Yes. What items do you want to speak on?
Yeah, hi, all of them. Daniel Dennis.
Okay, go ahead, you have three minutes for your items.
Okay, great. For item number 47, on Budlong Avenue, your problem is not speed bumps, it is lighting. Last night, you had a deadly shooting, I believe, involving the LAPD, and you should take this money and put it into more lighting. More lighting means less crime, that's a known fact. Item number 48, you misspelled the word appropriate, please fix that. And I would request, it's really not that difficult to run a spell check for an agenda for a city as big as Los Angeles. You have a number of COVID-19, oh, I'm sorry, let me go over also to item number 36. We're talking about loans and loan programs. I think it's been well-established that certain council members, like Herb Wesson, his family members have received special treatment on things like rent when he was involved in land development issues. And I think it should be very clear, unfortunately, it's going to be necessary because of Mr. Wesson, that any immediate family member, parents, spouses, siblings, and children should be ineligible for any of these loans, just so we are bending over backwards to make sure that these good programs are not being taken advantage of by immediate family members of council members or other city officials. Very important to do that, because the FBI is watching, as we've been saying for so long. Councilmembers, you also have a number of COVID items out there, and I think right now COVID is not your biggest problem. Over the weekend, and I sent out a tweet, Mr. Rue has not been responsive to this, on Ventura Boulevard, two days ago, I saw a butt-naked homeless guy blasting diarrhea, not only into Ventura Boulevard, but across the sidewalk. And there were undoubtedly since then thousands of people unwittingly walking through diarrhea, let alone of a homeless guy, tracking it into stores, tracking it into their cars, tracking it into their homes. And Mr. Rue will not respond as to when he will send out a crew to clean up the diarrhea that thousands of people in one of your most important shopping districts in Sherman Oaks are now traipsing through, tracking into their cars and homes. Mr. Rue, I'm going to be in contact with your office today to find out when this is going to be handled, and if not, I'll write a column about that. Lastly, and I don't know if we're into my public comment yet, but I'll move into it now. Ms. Martinez and Ms. Rodriguez, you have been non-responsive to an arson that I brought to your attention two days ago, where I came across hundreds of butane cans that were torched on the sidewalk in Van Nuys. The LAPD responded, and under this pile of hundreds of butane cans, some of which were still filled, because I lifted them, and I felt the weight of them. There was a burn area on the sidewalk, yet no response from the Public Safety Chair, Monica Rodriguez, no response from Council President Nury Martinez, who's the president of the city council and in whose district this took place. And then, those cans were left sitting out in 99-degree heat for another 24 hours. Miss, I hope Ms. Martinez can explain why there was an arson that sure as heck looks like anarchy and possibly an attempted terrorism is going unresponded to. Ms. Martinez has a request for public comment into her, into her office, and if I do not hear a response from them by the end of the day today, I'm going.
Let's go ahead and take the next speaker.
Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on. Caller with the phone number ending in 0441, please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
...for public comment into her, into her office, and if I do not hear a response from them.
Speaker, turn down the volume on your, your device. What items would you like to speak on?
I'd like to speak on item 21 and 42.
So you have two minutes, please go ahead.
Hey, great. Honorable councilmembers, this is Travia Sen with Esperanza Community Housing Corporation, and I'm speaking to item 21 and the general public comment. We urge you to approve item 21 to ensure the continued operation of the L.A. Justice Fund for current and new cases in the city of Los Angeles for this next year. And we urge you to approve this item at the full funding level of $1 million for the one-year renewal, including the amendment to allow LAGF providers the flexibility to serve both current and new cases. This is going to ensure increased efficiency in use of funds to maximize the benefit to our immigrant communities. And it would allow LAGF providers, but not require them, just allow them, who have the capacity to take on additional cases, to do so with the bridge funding for this next year. It's critical to ensuring that LAGF reaches as many people in this crisis as possible, and it does not require the addition of new funds. Thank you, and we urge you to support this along with the amendment. And we also urge you to support item 42. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go ahead and take the next caller.
Caller with the phone number ending in 1047, please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on. Caller with the phone number ending in 1047, please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Hello?
Hello, what items do you want to speak on?
I would like to make a public, a public comment.
Okay, you have one minute, go ahead.
Good morning, council. My name is Sylvester, founder of the Love We Don't See nonprofit organization in Los Angeles. I've been calling the past week to ask the council to publicly make a stance and a position on the 13th Amendment. Obviously, I know that you guys can't change that, but then bringing that conversation into mainstream will allow us to get to the root of all the systemic oppression and racism that has circulated our system since the inception of our system, that creates the environment where there's so much poverty and crime and the intersectionality between all of those things and the trauma that we deal with on a daily basis. If this council wants to lead and be in front of what the future looks like, and, you know, when the history books look back on what did we do with this time and during this era, I'd like the city council to be leading on that and be at the front of that. So with that, I'm going to yield the rest of my time. Please make a public stance on amending the 13th.
Thank you. Let's go ahead and take the next speaker.
Caller with the phone number ending in 5668, please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
My name's Javier Beltran, and I'm speaking on item 42.
Item 42? Go ahead, you have one minute.
Good morning, city council president and city council members. My name is Javier Beltran. I'm the deputy director for the Housing Rights Center. Here as a member of the Rights to Counsel Coalition, and we are in support of the adoption of item 42 to fund the emergency eviction defense program. The council should only see this program as a down payment to greater and more permanent tenant protection for the city renters by providing them necessary protections for displacement and homelessness. Due to the pandemic and the theme of tenant protection, an estimated 500,000 tenant households will be facing addictions and likely homelessness. Due to such possible horrific results, the council will provide additional resources to support the long-term goal of a codified right to providing eviction prevention and legal representation services throughout the city. We urge the city to work with the county in having a unified program and not work as a separate program to maximize the assistance and reduce inefficiency. Thank you very much.
Okay, next caller.
Caller with the phone number ending in 3234, please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on. Caller with the phone number ending in 3234, please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Can you please turn off your device? We're getting feedback and we can't hear you. What items do you want to speak on?
Can you hear me?
Yes, what items do you want to speak on?
I am speaking on general public comment today.
Okay, you have one minute, go ahead.
My name is Jasmine Vargas. I am a resident of CD1, and I'm also an organizer with Food and Water Action, where we, I wanted to bring to attention of the whole council. We have been calling your offices that last week on Tuesday, LAGWP had admitted to knowingly allowing a major methane leak at the Valley Generating Station in Sun Valley. This is in Council District 6, President Nury Martinez, this is in your backyard. And I've been hearing from community members, their shock and dismay that this has been going on for at least over a year without them knowing. And so they're calling, and we are calling for the immediate shutdown of Valley Generating Station as, until the leak is fixed and it is safe for the communities in that area that are predominantly Latinx communities and low-income communities.
Thank you very much. Okay, that concludes public comment for today's meeting. Let's go ahead and prepare to vote on the following items. Madam Clerk, let's go ahead and vote on items 1 through 9, items 22 through 34, items 36 through 41, and items 44 through 50. Go ahead and call the roll.
Blumenfield.
Blumenfield, aye.
Bonin.
Bonin, aye.
Buscaino.
Aye.
Sidiyo.
Sidiyo, aye.
Harris Dawson. Corretts.
Aye.
Krikorian.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
O'Farrell.
Aye.
Price.
Aye.
Rodriguez.
Aye.
Rue.
Mr. Rue?
Aye, sorry.
Wesson?
Wesson, aye.
And going back to Councilmember Harris Dawson?
Yes.
14 ayes, these items are adopted.
Okay, Madam Clerk, we're going to move on to item 14. This item was called special by Mr. O'Farrell.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. Item 14 is extending the temporary parking enforcement suspensions that we enacted earlier in the pandemic. And I ask for everyone's aye vote to continue this temporary parking enforcement suspension. When we took action initially, we helped reduce the immense burden of our residents who are still sheltering at home in many instances and/or are experiencing a drastic change in their income and are now busy homeschooling their children. In other words, there are so many things that the residents of Los Angeles are still focusing on that don't involve their normal routine that was, in effect, pre-COVID, that I strongly recommend that these actions be extended. And this continues the temporary suspension until October 1st to align with the mayor's most recent executive action. It gives us a chance to just monitor the realities of the the consequences of COVID that are felt in all of our neighborhoods. In addition, Department of Transportation and Streets LA are instructed to report back to the Transportation Committee with a phased transition plan to resume parking enforcement and street sweeping services, as well as propose economic relief measures for parking fines. Residents in our city still need our support to give them enough time to adjust to reinforcing parking restrictions, and taking this action today will do just that. So I ask for your aye vote. Thank you, Madam President.
Let's go ahead and prepare to vote on this item. Please call the roll.
Oh, Madam, Madam President, I think I have a hand on.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Buscaino, go ahead.
It's okay, it's okay, ma'am. Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, Mr. O'Farrell. We, we spoke at length on this item in Tea Committee. I want to thank Chairman Bonin for asking DOT to come back on a report on a phased transition plan as we move back into the enforcement of expired registration, overnight oversized parking districts, residential street sweeping. Members, and what I said in Tea Committee, I'll share with you here. I'm supportive of going and advancing this effort until October 1st, but after hearing numerous complaints from our residents on quality of life concerns as it relates to vehicles that have been sitting in residential areas for many, many months, even pre-COVID, and also the fact that, you know, some of our streets already, particularly in Watts, aren't even getting swept, that beyond, I cannot support moving forward beyond October 1st. So I just want to be responsive to the residents in my council district, and of course, our field staff, and hearing the, the number of complaints that we are getting on a daily basis. Now, we understand what the safer-at-home order, we are asking residents to stay in place to prevent the spread of COVID-19, I totally get it. But we're seeing our numbers reduced today, fewer hospitalizations. Our residents are heeding the call, but at a certain point, we have to get back to restoring our quality of life in our neighborhoods throughout the city. So with that, just wanted to share the fact that where I'm coming from, representing my district, that I cannot support this beyond October 1st. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Rodriguez?
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, Mr. Buscaino, for raising what I know is a concern that many of us in our communities are experiencing.
Ms. Rodriguez, we're having a bit of a hard time hearing you. Can you speak a little louder?
Can you hear me now?
It's a little bit better, go ahead.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Buscaino, for raising an issue that I know has been challenging many of our communities throughout the city. And it's a difficult balance of making sure that we're providing the support to those families that are now having to work out of their homes and not be affected by these parking restrictions. But as you clearly delineated, we are also compounding some of the challenges that we were already facing with respect to quality of life issues by not having some of the enforcement actions that are necessary. We've been going at this for six months. I, I too, I'm going to, you know, agree with you that I think we have to figure out some other alternatives going forward post-October 1st, because sustaining a lack of enforcement on some of these areas, particularly when we've identified, for example, even the high spike amongst the GTAs that have occurred citywide. The recovery of those vehicles in some of the, some of these areas are contributing to even some of the public safety concerns that we have. So I think it's really important that we, you know, we maintain a respectful balance between providing substantial relief for those families that are impacted and have parking concerns. But going forward, we really do need to have an alternative because it has, it has had a tremendous impact on quality of life issues. And, and thank you all for the hard work of this very difficult discussion, but it's, it's one that we need to move forward with some adaptations so that we can accommodate for those difficult parking areas and for those families that are impacted by some of the parking restrictions without undermining our quality of life. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rodriguez. Let's go ahead and vote on this item. Please call the roll.
Blumenfield.
Blumenfield, aye.
Bonin. Bonin.
Bonin, aye.
Buscaino.
Aye.
Sidiyo.
Sidiyo, aye.
Harris Dawson.
Yes.
Corretz.
Aye.
Krikorian.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
O'Farrell.
Aye.
Price.
Aye.
Rodriguez.
Aye.
Rue.
Aye.
Wesson.
Wesson, aye.
Fourteen ayes, this item is adopted.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Let's move on to item thirty-five. Please call the roll.
Blumenfield.
Blumenfield, aye.
Bonin.
Bonin, aye.
Buscaino.
Aye.
Sidiyo.
Sidiyo, aye.
Harris Dawson.
Yes.
Corretz.
Aye.
Krikorian.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
O'Farrell.
Aye.
Price.
Aye.
Rodriguez.
Aye.
Rue.
Aye.
Wesson.
Yes.
Fourteen ayes, this item is received and filed.
Okay, let's vote on item forty-two. Let's go ahead and take two votes, when to substitute. Mr. O'Farrell, would you like to speak on this item?
Yes, Madam President, thank you. Yes, before we vote, colleagues, as many of you probably heard, today, the governor signed into law AB 3088, which was a hastily crafted bill in Sacramento that really kind of popped up in the last week. A very complex bill that supersedes, this is the important part, supersedes all renter protection laws that we enacted back in March when the Los Angeles City Council adopted comprehensive protections for renters early in the pandemic. My office has been looking closely at the implications of this law, as is the City Attorney's Office. We're analyzing very closely, and we'll have some information, the details and the implications coming out very, very soon, hopefully as soon as tomorrow, so we can talk about it a little more. But upon an initial reading, the new state law does not look encouraging for renters in Los Angeles as several of the protections we granted are now eliminated. And the new law goes into effect immediately, and it is retroactive. So that's something else we're going to take a look at. The ordinance we enacted five months ago prevented landlords from evicting tenants during the local emergency period if loss of income is attributed to COVID-19 as long as the tenant notified the landlord in writing each month. Three months after the local emergency is lifted, tenants whose income and ability to pay their full rent because of the pandemic had up to 12 months to repay what is owed. Our ordinance also prohibited no-fault evictions. We also gave protections to renters who have unauthorized tenants and pets. They could not be evicted because of COVID-19. All residents in the city, regardless of immigration status, were covered by the protections that we enacted by ordinance. Because of AB 3088, all of these protections are now in question, and we will be able to report shortly on the protections that the new state law does offer. And for the record, there's been a lot of misunderstanding about the action taken in April by the California Judicial Council, which ended effectively today as it relates specifically to the City of Los Angeles. Their action, the Judicial Council's action, did not eliminate nor weaken the protections that we granted back in late March. Tenants in Los Angeles were protected before the Judicial Council took action and would have been protected after their rules were lifted regardless. And that was not true for the rest of the state, notwithstanding other locally affected COVID-19 renter protection ordinances. Regardless, today, with the motion that Council President Martinez and I introduced, this council is taking additional action to assist tenants who might be served with an eviction notice by their landlord. And we're doing that by creating the COVID-19 Emergency Eviction Defense Program, $10 million of CARES Act funding. This has, has, and continues to be a stated priority of this council to protect renters during the pandemic and as long as we can after the pandemic and the emergency declaration order is lifted. In the meantime, it is my hope that the state will take real and comprehensive action as it relates to rent and mortgage relief. And of course, we want the feds to resume their action and protections that only they can provide in relation to the banking and lending industries as it relates to mortgage forgiveness, forbearance, some sort of arrangement. Because what's happening in Los Angeles is happening across the entire United States. So colleagues, of course, I ask for an aye vote on this COVID-19 Emergency Eviction Defense Program. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. O'Farrell. Mr. Corretz?
I'd like to thank Madam President for offering the substitute motion today. I think that it's important because it implicitly acknowledges over two years of work that has already been done on creating an eviction defense program that makes being able to launch an emergency version immediately possible. This was originally called the Right to Counsel when it was introduced. Back in December, the Housing and Paw Committees approved a version of this long-term program. It was changed and held up through the bureaucratic process. And as part of this laborious process, in June of this year, the council approved an instruction to H-SID to update the program report. We were told at that time the report was almost ready. We're still waiting for that revised report, and I hope today's action will instill a sense of urgency in the H-SID staff to get that report to us as soon as possible. Doing so will make available additional funding opportunities we desperately need to serve more tenants threatened with evictions. Our goal on our program remains the same. Work to keep eviction cases out of court, provide legal assistance when necessary, provide rental assistance when that's needed to halt an eviction, and provide wraparound services to help tenants be better tenants. Today's action will allow the program to be jump-started, and we will continue to work on creating the seamless addition of a non-COVID-related program as soon as it's ready. Thank you, and I ask for your aye vote.
Thank you, Mr. Corretz. Mr. Bonin?
Thank you, Madam President. I want to thank you and Mr. O'Farrell for bringing the motion in, and of course, thank Mr. Corretz, who was sort of ringing the alarm on this issue long before COVID. Good to see this money getting out there. I just wanted to echo Mr. O'Farrell's comments about the need to get a briefing on the legislation that was signed last night. It's very lengthy and very complex, and I've heard conflicting things about it. The last I had heard, and I know things were changing very quickly, is that it did not impact things that cities had done more extensive than the legislation prior to the middle of August. So my understanding was the things that we had put in place were still there. That may have changed in last-minute stuff in Sacramento, so I'm definitely eager to hear that. One of the things that's worrisome about what Sacramento did is that it does preclude cities from going further. So I don't think it would allow us to do anything additional now. So I'm hoping what we did previously was covered. And it does not go as far as what the City of Los Angeles did. So it is pretty clear that in a lot of jurisdictions, we are going to have people who are going to get evicted, even if the real reason is they can't pay because of COVID expenses, because landlords are just going to push them around with some other element of, you know, complaining about a dog or a loud kid in the residence. So the soonest we can get a briefing and share that information with our constituents, the better. But again, just want to underscore the thanks to Ms. Martinez, Mr. O'Farrell, and Mr. Corretz for this motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bonin. I just want to just remind folks, at 9:51, the City Attorney did issue a confidential memo breaking down the legislation, and they're still analyzing it. And, Mr. Streffan, if we can just get a report back or another memo, making sure we break, not only a breakdown, but an analysis of exactly how this impacts Los Angeles in particular. But check your emails, there is a 9:51 memo issued by the City Attorney on this issue. Mr. Rue?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I just want to thank Mr. Councilman O'Farrell and all my colleagues who have been working on this issue for a long time. You know, this is unfortunately the wrong turn. And I know many of us were talking to Assemblymember David Chu for his original bill, AB 1436, which went further. And I believe a lot of our tenants' rights advocates were even trying to strengthen that to make sure we offered tenant protections. However, there are some positive aspects to the bill, and there are aspects that we could see as a launching point. And that's why I think what we're doing here today is one of those steps towards protecting Angelenos. And so I wholeheartedly support this. But I still want to point out that while it addresses the eviction issue, the debt issue is still looming. And I know this is something that we've talked about a lot in this council, and that is something that we are, clearly, it is on the federal and state governments to help resolve this. But I know we are also looking in the City Council to see how we could step up when the feds and the state don't. So, but I wholeheartedly support this, and I thank Councilman O'Farrell and the other co-authors of this motion.
Okay, Madam Clerk, let's go ahead and vote on whether to substitute. Please open the roll.
Blumenfield.
Blumenfield, aye.
Bonin.
Bonin, aye.
Buscaino.
Aye.
Sidiyo.
Aye.
Harris Dawson.
Yes.
Corretz.
Aye.
Councilmember Krikorian is recused. Councilmember Lee.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
O'Farrell.
Aye.
Councilmember Price is recused. Councilmember Rodriguez.
Aye.
Rue.
Aye.
Wesson.
Yes.
Fourteen ayes, the substitute motion is now before council.
Can we just go ahead and call the roll? Madam Clerk, go ahead and call the roll.
Yes. Correction, forty-two, it is thirteen, twelve ayes. Oh, twelve. Pardon me. Item forty-two, for the record, the motion to substitute passed with twelve ayes. And now for item forty-two, the substitute motion itself, Blumenfield.
Blumenfield, aye.
Bonin.
Bonin, aye.
Buscaino.
Aye.
Sidiyo.
Sidiyo, aye.
Harris Dawson.
Yes.
Corretz.
Corretz, aye.
Councilmember Krikorian is recused. Councilmember Lee.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
O'Farrell.
Aye.
Councilmember Price is recused. Councilmember Rodriguez.
Aye.
Rue.
Aye.
Wesson.
Yes.
Twelve ayes, the substitute motion is adopted.
Can we just move on to item forty-two? This was called special by Mr. Blumenfield and Mr. Corretz, and there is a substitute motion as well. Mr. Blumenfield, do you want to speak to this item?
Just to clarify, we're talking about forty-three, correct?
I'm sorry, yes, forty-three.
Okay, thank you. So colleagues, I introduced this motion because I didn't want businesses who are already struggling to be dinged for putting up signs just to let people know that they're open for takeout or sidewalk dining or in-dining, or whatever the case may be. These folks, as we all know, are really struggling, and it is confusing who is open when, and it is constantly changing. So they need to put up these temporary signs. Unfortunately, some of these businesses were hit with an unfortunate, unnecessary citations, but we've been working with Building and Safety General Manager Osama Yunin and Councilmember Marquis Harris Dawson and the mayor, and we were able to make this right. It's only a temporary suspension of the current code so that we can help our restaurants survive this pandemic, but do it in a responsible fashion. We're not removing this code forever. I had originally introduced the amending motion as an ordinance change, but with consulting with the City Attorney, they basically felt, and I agree with them, that at this point, it's better not to create a new ordinance since this is a temporary measure, but instead to suspend the current ordinance around signage at businesses and to lay out exactly what we're doing to help our restaurants. So that's the reason for the slight tweak and for the substitute motion. Osama and his team will also let us know per the motion, when the report backs, which codes present safety concerns that we still need to enforce and the status of the fourteen order to comply temporary sign violations that have already occurred. So colleagues, I think this is a common-sense motion, and it is to help our businesses be able to communicate with the public their status and to get reports back on what are the key codes that need to be enforced and what doesn't need to be enforced during this critical time, and that's why I ask for your aye vote.
Mr. Blumenfield, we need a clarification. Are you introducing a substitute or an amendment? Your staff just emailed the amendment. If it's a slight tweak, then it's an amendment.
It is a substitute motion, but it is a substitute motion because it is changing it from an ordinance to a suspension, as I read it out.
Got it. Okay, so then we'll make the correction on our end, and it was seconded by Mr. Krikorian. So why don't we go ahead and go to other speakers? Mr. Corretz?
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, Mr. Blumenfield, for a great and common-sense but very necessary direction to staff on this. I'm sure we've all gotten complaints from businesses that are struggling anyway and getting fined for sign enforcements. It's just one more struggle for businesses trying to survive. Just an additional ancillary commentary to Building and Safety. They're currently not enforcing building and safety issues unless the issue is considered life-threatening. This has allowed construction projects to go unchecked and illegal businesses to continue to operate. And in my opinion, the council offices need to be able to request our Building and Safety inspectors to investigate locations and issues of importance. Construction has been considered essential work during the COVID-19 pandemic, and I believe inspection of construction projects should also be considered essential. In my district, I know there are several violations that I would consider life safety concerns, and I would hope to see enforcement right away in response to the needs of council offices.
Thank you, Mr. Corretz. Mr. Krikorian?
Thank you very much, Madam President. Thank you, Mr. Blumenfield, for pushing forward with this apparently necessary clarification of the council's previous instructions to Building and Safety. Just to put this into a context, on March 27th, when the safer-at-home orders had only just begun, I introduced a motion seconded by the council president requesting that Building and Safety relax quality-of-life violations to avoid exactly this kind of situation. That motion was unanimously passed by this council on April 22nd. And yet, for some unknown reason, at the end of July, Building and Safety started issuing these citations in my district to restaurants and other businesses along Ventura Boulevard towards the end of July. We began working immediately with Building and Safety and with the mayor's office to ensure that those violations, those citations were rescinded. And in doing so, it became clear that there was room for, I guess, reasonable discussion about what constitutes a quality-of-life violation, and as Mr. Corretz pointed out, what constitutes life-threatening or other kinds of public safety-type violations. So what this motion does is really drills down So what this motion does is really drills down on refining that and making it clearer so that there's no ambiguity or less ambiguity around enforcement of these things, these issues. Because it's clear, as this council has already demonstrated by its previous unanimous vote, it's clear that this council intends for Building and Safety not to bring the hammer down on businesses that are just trying to survive, especially our small and independent businesses who are doing whatever they can do to get through the next week or month in the hopes of staying open. And it's not helpful when we have citations for, you know, what, under normal circumstances, a lot of people would probably consider to be ticky-tack little violations. But especially in these extraordinary circumstances, it's just not acceptable and can't be tolerated. So I look forward to having Building and Safety really refine what is imperative to be enforced and what is not. I know that the general manager has already done great work with his staff in doing exactly that and working with Mr. Blumenfield and others in doing that. So this is a really important step forward to preserve safety, but also preserve economic health of the businesses that would otherwise be set. So I ask for your aye vote.
Thank you. Members, is prepared to vote on whether to substitute? Want to go ahead and call the roll, Madam Clerk?
Blumenfield.
Blumenfield, aye.
Bonin.
Bonin, aye.
Buscaino.
Aye.
Sidio.
Aye.
Harris Dawson.
Yes.
Corretts.
Aye.
Krikorian.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
O'Farrell.
Aye.
Price.
Aye.
Rodriguez.
Aye.
Rue.
Aye.
Wesson.
Wesson, aye.
Fourteen ayes. The substitute motion is now before council.
Can we just go ahead and prepare to vote on that item? Please call the roll.
Blumenfield.
Blumenfield, aye.
Bonin.
Bonin, aye.
Buscaino.
Aye.
Sidio.
Sidio, aye.
Harris Dawson.
Yes.
Corretts.
Aye.
Krikorian.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
O'Farrell.
Aye.
Price.
Aye.
Rodriguez.
Aye.
Rue.
Aye.
Wesson.
Yes.
Fourteen ayes. The substitute motion is adopted.
Okay, Madam Clerk, let's go ahead and move on to verbal motions. How many do you have?
Madam President, there are four verbal motions today.
Okay, why don't we start with the first one?
The first verbal motion, as a Rule 16 motion, has been introduced by Councilmember Harris Dawson. This moves to transfer appropriate $100,000 in the AB 1290 Fund CD-8 Redevelopment Project Services to the Public Works Fund Contractual Services for maintenance services throughout CD-8 coordinated by the Coalition for Responsible Community Development. And a secondor?
Second.
Mr. Bonin, next one?
Thank you. The next verbal motion, to be referred to the Planning and Land Use Management Committee, has been introduced by Councilmember Rue. This moves that the Department of City Planning close the loophole allowing McMansions and multifamily zones and prepare an update to the baseline mansionization ordinance and the baseline hillside ordinance to apply the same restrictions applicable to homes in single-family zones to all new and substantially remodeled single-family residences in all multifamily zones.
Second.
Second by Mr. Bonin.
Thank you.
Next?
Next is a verbal motion introduced by Councilmember Rue, referred to the Planning and Land Use Management Committee relative to the Department of City Planning with the assistance of the Housing and Community Investment Department, city administrative officer, and the chief legislative analyst to prepare a report within 90 days that identifies beneficial amendments to the density bonus ordinance, necessary staff and resources to accomplish the goal, and a process for coordinating such update with the 2021 through 2029 update to the housing element schedule. Is there a second to this motion?
A second.
Second by Mr. Bonin. Next one?
The final verbal motion is a motion introduced by Councilmember Rue, referred to the Planning and Land Use Management Committee relative to the Department of City Planning to prepare and present an ordinance in line with the work on updating the city's housing element to establish an affordable, equitable housing protection overlay program and zone. Is there a second to this motion?
Second.
Second by Mr. Corretts. Any others, Madam Clerk?
No, Madam President, those are all the motions.
Okay, over to you, members. Ms. Rodriguez?
Thank you, Madam President. And I therefore move that the Department of Water and Power, in consultation with the Bureau of Street Lighting, develop and fund a plan to install air quality monitors on street lighting poles, city infrastructure, and other viable locations, including residences and businesses within a one-mile radius of the Valley Generating Station while it remains in service. And I have you down as my second.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Rodriguez. I confirm that I'm going to second that. Do you have any others? Thank you, Mr. Buscaino.
Thank you, Madam President. On September 10th, KNX News Radio will celebrate its 100th birthday. So with that, I therefore be it resolved that by the adoption of this resolution, the Los Angeles City Council does hereby recognizing and congratulate KNX on their 100th anniversary. Congratulations, and may you continue to grow and prosper in shared news to the City of Los Angeles. I have two more, Madam President.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Corretts. Any others, Mr. Buscaino?
Yes, Madam President, two more. Two LAPD retirements. First, Lieutenant David Bachmann. Get to the moving clause. Therefore, be it resolved that by the adoption of this resolution, the LA City Council does hereby congratulate and thank Lieutenant David Bachmann for his 30 years of service to the LAPD and commends him for his commitment to duty professionalism in serving the people of the City of Los Angeles. Best wishes are extended for a long, happy, rewarding retirement.
Is there a second?
Second.
Hold on for the second, I got to confirm your second. Everyone spoke at the same time.
Okay.
It was Ms. Rodriguez. Thank you. Next, Mr.?
We can Rochambeau later, Mitch.
That's okay. One very second, just fine.
Let Mitch have the second, the next one, Mr. Buscaino.
I'll have Mr. O'Farrell second this one. Another retirement, Sergeant Peter Harris, 31-plus years of loyal and dedicated service to the LAPD and commends him for his unfailing commitment to duty professionalism in serving the people of the City of Los Angeles and wishes him to a long, happy, and rewarding retirement.
Second by Mr. O'Farrell.
Second. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you.
That's all got.
Mr. Rue?
Thank you, Madam Chair. My motion reads, I therefore move that the Planning Department prepare and present an amendment to the Hillside Construction Regulations Supplemental Use District that will standardize the definition and comprehensively map all recommended locations for the HCR SUD citywide. I further move that the Planning Department prepare and present an amendment to the Hillside Construction Regulations Supplemental Use District to include the HCR overlay in all Council District 4 hillsides, which feature high concentration of active construction, substandard streets, restricted ingress and egress, below-average emergency response times, lack of pedestrian infrastructure, and location in very high fire hazard severity zones, specifically including, but not limited to, the communities of Beaumont, Casin, and Coldwater Canyon. I further move that the City Council instruct the Planning Department to add the HCR SUD to all hillside and BHFSZ parcels to the map of proposed zoning changes as part of the Hollywood Community Plan Update.
Is there a second? Mr. Corretts? Any others? Mr. Corretts, a second that. Mr. Rue, any others?
No, that's it. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Corretts.
Thank you, Madam President. I just have one short motion. I move that the matter of the definition of kennel/business purposes slash Los Angeles Planning and Zoning Code slash Amendment as recorded under Council File 17-1237-S1, which expired per Council Policy (CF05-0553) be reactivated and that the matter be restored in its most recent legislative status as of the date of the final expiration.
Second.
Okay, that was been seconded by Mr. Blumenfield. Okay, Madam Clerk, what's before us?
Counsel has motions for posting a referral, and those motions will be posted on the City Clerk website shortly after the meeting, and the desk is clear, Madam President.
Thank you. Members, are there any announcements? Any adjourned motions? Mr. Rue?
Thank you, Madam President. Earlier this month, we lost one of the country's leading scholars on the incarceration of Japanese-Americans during World War II. Professor Lain Harabashi was the son of concentration camp survivors and spent decades working to preserve the memories of the prison camps so that this part of our history would never be forgotten. Professor Lain grew up in a house of academics. His uncle Gordon was a professor at the University of Alberta, but his education was interrupted by imprisonment. Gordon was arrested after protesting the roundup of Japanese-Americans after the 1941 attack on Pearl Harbor. His legal fight eventually reached the U.S. Supreme Court, and his case was repeatedly cited when President Reagan signed the Civil Liberties Act of 1988. Lain became the first professor in the nation to be named to the academic chair dedicated to the study of the incarceration camps and the wartime experience of Japanese-Americans. Lain considered it a family obligation to tell these stories throughout his life. He combined academia with activism. While teaching at San Francisco State, he joined the fight to preserve housing for elderly Japanese immigrants. He taught at the University of Colorado, UC Riverside, and finally, UCLA, all while investigating a time when more than 120,000 Japanese-Americans were rounded up, stripped of their possessions, and taken against their will to prison camps. His research and writings have played a critical role in how we remember some of the darkest moments of our nation's history, and his scholarship and activism will long outlive him. Harabashi is survived by his wife Marilyn, his sister Jan Rice, and his extended family. May he rest in peace.
Ms. Rue, do you mind adding me to that?
Yes, of course.
Okay, does include Mr. Lee on that adjourned motion? Thank you. Mr. Harris Dawson?
Thank you, Madam Chair and members. I asked today that we adjourn in the memory of a young man that is another huge, huge loss to our community, to our city, to the arts industry. You know, in the line of Nipsey Hussle and Kobe Bryant, this past week, we lost Chadwick Boseman. Chadwick Boseman was an actor, died at the age of 43 from colon cancer, from South Carolina, went on to Howard University, studied acting, and then went to a summer program in Oxford. And he hit a hitch while he was at Oxford where he didn't have the money, and some African-American artists in Hollywood were calling around raising money. And so an actor named Denzel Washington said, sure, I'll pay for the kids' schooling. So he finished his program there, came back to New York City and worked for the Schaumburg Center and did work in theater there. Eventually went on to play really four signature roles, or three signature roles in one gargantuan role. The life of Supreme Court Justice Thurgood Marshall, the life of music pioneer James Brown, the life of our own, Pasadena's own, the person who broke the color line in baseball, Jackie Robinson. If you know those three people, you know they're very, very different. And he did all those roles. You walked out of the theater feeling like you'd just seen Thurgood Marshall, or you'd just seen Jackie Robinson, or you'd just seen James Brown. Then in 2018, a film that broke every record that films possessed and really changed the dynamic for filmmaking around the world. I was in a room with makers of the movie Parasite, a Korean-language film that got a lot of play here in the United States and around the world. And that filmmaker said, without Black Panther, my movie doesn't get distributed around the world. Chadwick Boseman played the Black Panther, the first black superhero movie in a big-budget movie, and did things in that film that, in all of my years of watching movies growing up in this town, I'd never seen black people do on film. He was the hero, he was the person who saved the day, he was the person that was reliable, he was the person that was beyond reproach, and no one could have played that role better than Mr. Chadwick Boseman. We learned this week after his death that while he was filming Marshall and the Black Panther and Captain America and other films, he was living with a diagnosis of cancer. And during that diagnosis, logged some of the most historical work in the history of film in this world. And so I ask that the City of Los Angeles and this council join with the rest of the world in mourning and recognizing the loss of Mr. Chadwick Boseman.
Thank you, Mr. Harris Dawson. That was beautiful. Mr. Corretts?
I'd like to add on to that very elegant and moving obit. Thank you, Mr. Harris Dawson.
Thank you.
Any other adjourned motions, members? Seeing none? Our meeting is adjourned. Thank you.